We would invite you to be standing and join us in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer to follow our moment of silence. And that moment of silence tonight will be in special reflection of today's Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and so we'll keep all the fallen police officers in our foster in a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council meeting is called to order, and we invite you to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're seated, please. Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
I will now entertain a motion to the dispens of the reading of the Journal from May first, two thousand twenty-three.
So, blue.
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to the dispens of the reading of the Journal from May first, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
That motion passes. And now comes the time for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment this evening addressing council, I would invite you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and then make your comments, or if you'd like to reserve time on the agenda later on for a piece of legislation, you may do that at this time under public comment.
Jake Penwell, president of the Community Primer Corporation, my business at one-sixty-eight West Main Street, Shelby, reserving time under Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one-three. Thank you.
Any announcements in public comment time? Moving forward to reports from standing and special committees. First off, finance, personal committee, Councilman Mudd.
Thank you, Mayor. I got two for this evening. So, we met as the, as three, Mr. Gates was out of town, but I was able to take the meeting, and so I'll try to go through that as quickly as we can. We'll start on, as we want to do, start on the back page. We received in income tax collections nine hundred and one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the month of April. It was down from last year, last year being kind of a high point there, but over the three-year average, eighteen point nine percent. For a total to the coppers of just over two million dollars through the first four months of the year, again compared to the three-month average, sixteen point twenty-one percent. If we go to page two, you can see where those individual business withholding is there and running up against that sixteen point two-one percent as the aggregate. All right. And I have a note here. Mr. Crum, do you check to see if that number was correct, forty-eight point eight-three?
It was accurate, yes.
That is correct. Thank you very much. Say. All right, to the front page. And the Journal Fund, cash on hand, we have just under two point four million dollars. After encumbrances, we have one point nine in there. Nothing much to note in the way of that. That is a change to the positive forty-eight thousand year-over-year. Going down to the highlights here, going down to the utility funds, you can see that in four hundred and five hundred respectively, after encumbrances, there is fifty-nine thousand in the sewer fund and the five hundred water fund, there's only thirteen thousand after encumbrances. But we haven't fully seen the CPI effects yet to those funds. So, we are looking at those funds, but we are not yet worried about those funds. So, we'll keep that, keep an eye on that. And of course, in the six hundred fund, there's a little over five million cash in there with after encumbrances, just a little under four million there. That brings the total cash in the city treasury to seventeen million one hundred and seven thousand and ninety-seven dollars. Not much on the next page. The wages on, the next page, under wages, there is a slight increase on that, but that is accounted for with the additional firefighters we brought on board and a couple retirements there. And so, considering kind of the inflationary stuff, that's actually a little below, we've kind of projected the difference there. That has to do with staffing vacancies, at least part of it. Nothing really on the next page. We'll go to the cash investment reconciliation. We've completed, for the most part, the transfer from PNC Bank and over to, you can see where it's going, to McCann's Bank and Park National Bank and US Bank respectively. And so, there is, in a general account, still about two hundred and fifty thousand, but once those CDs mature, we'll complete the transfer out of there. And of course, the Suterage Fund with moderate gains. And so, that's kind of it for the financial statement. On personnel, we did receive the resignation of Sergeant Joe Artrip. He is moving closer to his home, Ashland, and that was as effective on May twenty-first. Incoming to the Service Department, Water Distribution side, is Connor Corvus. He is returning to the city from a brief, call it sabbatical away. That is, he's come home. So, that is it on the personnel side. So, absent any questions on that, I would move that the combined financial statement and cash investment reconciliation statement both dated April thirtieth to two thousand twenty-three be received, placed on file, posted to the city website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement both dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Here.
That motion passes. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regard to his report? Mr. Gates?
My thanks to Mr. Martin for subbing for me last Friday afternoon.
We missed you, but yes, thank you, Councilman Martin. All right. Moving forward to the Utility Streets Committee, the same, Councilman Martin.
All right. Let's do it. I'll put the news here. All right. The first part we talked about, and obviously this is the most extensive part of our meeting, was dealing with sidewalks. So, let's read near recent conversations on strategic plan for sidewalks throughout the community. The primary reason for that conversation has revolved around the safety of pedestrians. Many residents walk in the street where no sidewalks are located available. It is a safety issue that needs discussed, make sure pedestrians are protected. At the request of the committee, the administration was asked to discuss, research the topic. And the administration did so, and what they found is that the Planning Commission authorized the exemption of sidewalks in numerous subdivisions, and thus removing the developer or homeowners from installing sidewalks at that time. There are few meeting records from the archives on this matter, but the administration does not have a statutory authority to overturn said decisions of the Planning Commission. And so, that's the official stance of the administration and of the committee is basically what was done, was done, or accepted. Ordance fourteen, two thousand nineteen does provide statutory authority to address the construction and repair of sidewalk, but council provides that direction, same under the city charter in section ninety-four. That provides the statutory, the underlying statutory authority to address construction and repair sidewalks. Again, council provides that direction. So, the administration feels that they would have difficulties in developing a strategic plan based on the fact that council is the main directing point of that. And so, is the recommendation of the administration that council entertain an ad hoc committee for the discussion of sidewalk construction and repair for the community as a whole. Notes of interest, the Planning Commission recently met and decided to mandate sidewalks on Technology Parkway and a section of Glenwood between Samantha and Technology. The new sidewalks on Technology Parkway were provided, paid for by the owner of the property, Technology Parkway up there. The vision and desire was to have sidewalks for residents to use. The owner of Lloyd Rebar witnessed many walkers, runners in the street, and decided to follow through with the vision for safety of pedestrian because they obviously have a lot of trucks moving in and out of there. So, appreciate that. I have a lot of other documents you guys have as well on the different charts and that. But with that, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that council establish an ad hoc committee for the discussion of sidewalk construction and repair within the community as a whole.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates to establish an ad hoc committee to study and give direction in regard to the construction and repair of sidewalks citywide. That's basically it, right? I got the gist of it?
Okay.
That's the purpose of the ad hoc committee. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
I think that having such committee, first of all, it would kind of take this out of our standing committees, give it a little more, I don't know if importance is the word, but similar to what we do with parking, you know, making sure that we have a system in place to kind of look at where we are with sidewalks in the community, and if there's even a need for making changes or addressing things. And having an avenue for that, as well as an avenue for discussion from the public within that framework. So, I think that it'd be a good thing going forward, and I certainly would be willing to serve as the chair of that committee if my colleagues so wish to put such a committee in place.
Any further discussion? A roll call vote then on establishing the ad hoc committee. Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Here.
That motion passes. Mr. Martin?
And then I, when we did the parking committee, I can't remember if we nominated people or what was the process for going about doing that.
Do you remember, Mr. Roberts, your honor?
I'm the chair, but I don't remember how it came up with.
No, I definitely don't mind being the chair, but would definitely appreciate if someone else joined me on the committee.
Mr. Gates?
I believe the rules, I've got them in my bag here, I believe the rules of council require or name or give the responsibility of naming committee members to the president of council. Give me a minute, I'll let you know that for sure.
Mr. Gates?
Rule five committees, number, paragraph one, the presiding officer shall appoint committees as deemed necessary for efficient handling of council business.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Martin, you're volunteer to be the chair, so you could fit that bit off. If anyone has expressed interest in serving on this ad hoc committee, it's Mr. Martin. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I have round shoulders.
Yes. You two make a dynamic duo.
Yeah.
Okay, so the ad hoc committee, I am, I am put place on that committee, Councilman Martin and Councilman Gates will make up the ad hoc committee, and you gentlemen, of course, will set the dates as you see fit. And those will be public meetings. Mr. Martin?
I appreciate that, and if my colleagues will give me a week or so, I'll make sure we get some things on the schedule as far as that goes. I don't just want to skip over this because I think that would be kind of unfair. There was significant discussion during the portion of it. Many, there were several, six or seven citizens who expressed their, I just felt it was a strong word, but just concerns regarding sidewalks and, you know, specifically on Glenwood, Samantha Drive area, the Technology Parkway, et cetera, like that. So, I don't want to just gloss over it. You know, there was significant discussion along those lines, and my hope is that the ad hoc committee will provide avenue for further discussion and bring in concerns from citizens and us to come up with a solution if indeed we deem that there is a solution that's needed. So.
What's that?
There we go. Citywide cleanup days. All right, so it is that time of the year again. We're going to show pride citywide. And that, this sounds like something the mayor came up with because it rhymes. It's the password, you know. It doesn't rhyme, but it's not worth the time. All right, so Thursday, June eighth, eight AM to five PM. Friday, June ninth, eight AM to five PM. Saturday, June tenth, eight AM to two PM, we're going to be having our cleanup days. Now, there is going to be a drop-off site, an empty parking lot at the south end of High School Avenue, across from the Fire Department and Police Department, and the, it's basically the south end of the demo site with Central Elementary School, so. Note, tree limbs and branches. Tree limbs and branches will be picked up curb-side at your home, so just make sure they're on the curb, and they'll be picked up, they must be on the curb on or by Thursday, June eighth. You know, so don't put them out there on Saturday, June tenth, because they may or may not get done, so make sure you get them out there. Our service department crews will pick up limbs and branches throughout the city. Lims and branches will be accepted at the drop-off site. And I don't have it here, but last year I thought we had a certain diameter. Do we have the diameter that we allowed on that, or? Nope, all right, we're just taking it there. All right, just get your limbs and branches out there. Make sure that you put them by the curb, make sure they're away from guide wires and such like that, they all, kind of similar to the leaf pickups as well. You can see the flyer, or call City Hall or the Utilities Office for cleanup days information. The flyers were made, mailed out with the utility bills, and the info, of course, is on our city website under News and Announcements, and I believe we're putting some things out on the Facebook feed as well, so. More to come on that, but always a good event, and we get a lot of participation, and heaven knows, I appreciate not having to find a pickup truck to move limbs and branches along. All right. Bright Speed Fiber to Premise update. So, Bright Speed Fiber to Premise project is still scheduled to start this summer. Project engineers are finalizing the project's scope and aligning contractors to start the fiber build-out throughout the community. Citywide campaign is being scheduled before they launch their upgrade. We did do some reviews and discussions on the joint use pole agreement, pole attachment agreement. Those have been productive. Both parties reviewed and agreed to exercise language in Article fifteen, thus will allow the continuation of the current agreement to be utilized with Bright Speed. The original agreement was crafted in nineteen eighty-two between United Telephone Company and the city of Shelby. That Article fifteen has been exercised multiple times during the transfer of ownership. Sprint, Embark, CenturyLink, and now Bright Speed. One difference with the assignment is that they will be amending the name on the agreement from United Telephone Company to Bright Speed. Bright Speed is now the official registered name. Sprint, Embark, and CenturyLink are all doing business as, under the United Telephone Company registered name. Bright Speed will be its own registered entity, so it will be need to be reflected. There was a discussion about franchise fees, because Omni Fiber, we got franchise fees negotiated with Omni Fiber. The difference is that Omni Fiber offers DirecTV as part of the package, and that would allow the collection of a franchise fee. However, Bright Speed will not be offering DirecTV or any other television streaming services. They're going to be purely an internet service provider ISP, so there will be no franchise fee. So, I don't know, I don't know how that works if they decide in the future to offer those services or whatnot, but that's information says. All right, wastewater treatment plant. The new Ohio EPA operating requirements for the wastewater treatment plant are forthcoming. The wastewater treatment plant will need to control phosphorus discharges to the Black Fork River. A phosphorus discharge optimization evaluation plan is required to be submitted to the Ohio EPA by November first. The plan will need to be meet the specifications for the following. Evaluation of collected affluent data, possible source reduction measures, operational improvements, and facility modifications to optimize reduction of phosphorus discharges. The plan will need to show, explain how the treatment source will reduce from phosphorus discharges to basically one part per million or below. Our current phosphorus readings are between point four to one point six or point four to one point six parts per million. Engineering study will need to be completed to specify the necessary treatment to control those phosphorus levels. The Ohio EPA lab technician has assisted with the initial testing to determine what chemical treatment would be best to control phosphorus. Bottom line is, it's going to be modification of the plant that will be necessary, and we are looking, this is just a loose estimate, this is something that we got, we got an estimate from one source, we're looking for estimates from other sources, so we think this is a high estimate, but it is an estimate, around five hundred and sixty thousand. And we're also looking at funding sources and, of course, EPA loans and such like that for that. So, more to come on the actual costs, but just to let council know that it's coming at some point. So, our hopes are to be much lower than that. That is, what is. All right. Upcoming legislation. Water tap fees are required. There's been a recent increase in the cost of supplies and materials that exceed the current amount that is charged to cover the expense to make a water tap for a new water service line. Tap fees are adjusted at the beginning of the year. That fee adjustment is based on CPI. So, the current hauling cost to make a water tap is approximately thirty-two hundred dollars. The current recovery per water tap is around twenty-one. And so, we're looking to amend chapter ten forty to essentially account for that in water taps. And then we're also looking to put in a continued annual adjustment per the CPI, and for that on both the water taps and also the sewer lateral taps, so I'll put that all on the same thing. One thing I did ask Mr. Insman was that when we put in the language for the CPI, that we match it to the CPI language that we currently have, so we're not operating two different CPIs. In effectually best. All right. Upcoming legislation is coming on auction items. We are collecting information on items deemed not needed for municipal purposes and composing those items from the Utilities Department, Police Department, Health Department. Items we presented council for approval to sell, and we are currently researching municipal bid and gov deals to set an account as online auction sites. The, I did ask about the smoke stack. That information is, that is moving along, and we're still looking at around that four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, but sooner the better, I say. Get that taken care of. All right, last, certainly not the least, especially for you gardening aficionados, the community garden plots have been tilled and are ready for planting season. Garden communications posted on the city website. The garden plots are located on the north side of the water treatment plant on North Gamble. Gardeners are permitted to drive along the garden plots to access their plots. Please refrain from driving in the grassy area after rain events to avoid damaging the lawn. Rain barrels are located in the front of the tool shed for watering the plants. Gardening tools are available. Tools are located in the tool shed. If you are wanting tools, please visit the Utilities Office, sign out a key. Residents seeking information to reserve a plot or, if you simply have questions about the garden, call the Utilities Office at four one nine three four two four zero eight five, and they will take care of that. This is a great way for people who don't have their own garden plots to garden, so have fun doing that. Mayor.
I think you're Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regard to his report? Very many, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen and children, if you heard what you wanted to hear, you're more than welcome to stay in for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to take your leave at any time. I just want to let you know. That's not unusual. All right, Safety Committee, Councilman Rogers.
Thanks, sir. Safety Committee on the third, and we kind of jumped up the order from starting with police news and joined by April Police Chief Proch, Assistant Chief Ballman, and Richmond County Sheriff Shelby. The discussion comes around the idea that the county and Mansfield Police Department are going to buy a new Bearcat SWAT vehicle. And they're asking other municipalities in the county to aid in the purchase price, and ask that Shelby, gosh, be right around fifty thousand dollars if we were able to put that much into this unit. This unit would replace an older one, and the new one is bigger, it's four doors, it's a two-door, you can carry more equipment and officers if that need arise, although it never does, but it has. The old unit, the old unit may remain in the county, as Ontario is interested in buying the old one. Chief Combs thinks he can find a way to contribute the fifty thousand dollars over the next five years. The cost of the new unit would be around three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. It was reported that the current Bearcat has saved many officers from harm and possible death, and has been integral part in law enforcement in the county. I have, it's the first time at all council where I want to find meetings that is great, so we all have that information if we need, and I have it here if anyone else would like to look at it. Fire news, we learned that there will be a forcible entry training class. Chief Thompson wanted to thank Bioscope and Millirons for donating the fifteen hundred dollars to have the class, and it happened right here in Shelby. There will be an EMA meeting on the twenty-fourth, and as Mark said earlier, Joe Artrip will be resigning effective on the twentieth, and we'd like to thank him for the time that he did spend here in Shelby, and the state of the job, as Mark, as Mr. Mark said, close to home. Cost of Mark's is kind of up in the air right now, the radio system. The auditor is thinking that it's going to be fiscally insolvent by the year twenty-twenty-seven, so if we keep going at the current rate. So, more to come on that, and we're hoping that that doesn't happen because we're, you know, as expensive as it is, and if the... know, as expensive as it is, and if the price goes up, that's just all money we want to put out. And health news, no one from the health department attended, they were either on vacation or, or out of the office. The health department did submit by email a report, and also, as Mr. Martin said, cleanup days, we do eight through tenth. Flyers worked, went out in the utility bills and are on the website. Shelby Health received a grant for over eleven thousand dollars for mosquito control and workforce development grant for, for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Oh, death in front of us of her possible retirement sometime between now and January third, twenty twenty-four. And lastly, she tells us that the pandemic is officially over.
Councilman Roberts, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? Very none. We'll move forward then to Committee Hold report from Councilman McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee of the Hold met just before this meeting here, and we were discussing a possible fire levy, which could cover additional employees, potential building improvements, firefighter personnel here, vehicle replacement plan, and other equipment and supplies for the fire department. We're looking at a possible five-year term from an income tax, up to five percent, which could raise an estimated five hundred thousand annually. Possible legislation is coming at the next council meeting in June. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McLaughlin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. McLaughlin in regard to his report? Very none. We'll move forward then to reports of city officials, a report of the mayor. Since our last meeting, I've been engaged in typical mayoral duties. On May the second, I attended the RCDG Leadership Board meeting in Ontario. May the sixth, I presented proclamation at a district convention of American Legion Ladies Auxiliary hosted here in Shelby. Also on May sixth, about a half hour later, I held a ribbon cutting for the Shelby Disc Golf Course that's nestled in the gently rolling landscape of Seltzer Park. On May the ninth, participated in a board of health staff meeting. On May the tenth, we held a ribbon cutting at the Shelby Marketplace IGA, and certainly glad to see that business, that iconic business, is still doing well near Shelby. On May the eleventh, I attended the public hearing in Mansfield in regard to the dispetition initiated by the city of Shelby and landlords, and I believe commissioners will be meeting tomorrow morning to discuss that program at their Richmond County Commission of Meeting. Yesterday, I participated in Richmond County Spread the Light event that is held in Ontario. First responders were honored, and blue lights were distributed for the observance of National Police Week, and so encourage everyone this week in a special way to say thank you to police officer and, and wear blue if you can, and also place blue lights and porch lights and so forth, in some ways recognizing the work of our police departments. We'll be giving a proclamation in a few moments in that regard. But before I get that proclamation, I'd like to give a proclamation designating May as Poppy Month. You probably noticed I'm wearing a Buddy Poppy that was given to me. Proclamation of reeds, whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen twenty-two, and whereas American Legion Auxiliary Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans at the Ohio Veterans Home in Sandusky, Ohio, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the auxiliary is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the city of Shelby, Ohio, hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies and the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. Furthermore, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppies as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Together, let us celebrate and promote Poppy Days. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of Shelby this fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. It's been noted that on May nineteenth and twentieth, the ladies will be out about, on those days, selling or giving poppies for donations to this so wonderful, worthy cause. And also a proclamation National Police Week, two thousand and twenty-three, to designate the week of May fourteenth to the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth, which of course is today, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls dedicated as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Shelby play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Shelby, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the officers of the police department of the city of Shelby unceasingly provide this vital public service, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the importance of this vital and valuable public service, now therefore I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the city of Shelby, in recognition of this event, declare the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Police Week. I further call upon the citizens of Shelby to recognize Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Shelby to be affixed this fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. And Captain Rat, so happy that you're here this evening, and if you would please take this proclamation and post it in a visible site and, and we sure appreciate the Shelby Police Department and all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's give a round of applause for that. That, gentlemen, is my report. Any comments or questions for me? If not, we'll move forward then to Mr. Crown.
Thank you, sir. As much as I know everybody likes to talk numbers all night long, Councilman Martin really covered most of the, the important stuff in the meeting this evening, so I really don't have a report.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Crown? Finally, trigger. Very none. Move forward then to Mr. Eisner. Law record, go report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geis, project coordinator. Thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, we did receive a very interesting email. I remember, I think it was two years ago, there was water drains that were put out by the state of Ohio. We've received an email and see if we're still interested. So there was one for West Park Drive area, and another one for Walnut, and all the streets that go off there, so I checked the link, they wanted updated, updated estimates and so forth, so I got that late today. So all the information will be furthered in yet tomorrow, and who knows? And even if we get one, that's going to be a wonderful thing, so we'll keep you up on hearing more news on that. And we will be having a pre-construction meeting for our paving program this Wednesday, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Let's move on then to new business, any new business that we brought for council decision? Councilman Gates.
Mayor, I had asked the clerk to include some information from the Ohio Ethics Commission. I get their quarterly newsletter, and they're, one of their emphasis, as kind of always is, is about conflicts of interest. So there's a two-page, one-page, one-piece, two-sided document here that I wanted to share with people. The most important part, I think, is at the bottom of the second page. How should public officials and employees respond to conflicts of interest? When someone in public service is confronted with a conflict of interest, he or she must completely, and completely is underlined, abstain from making decisions about or influencing how the matter is resolved. Such substantial refusal should include refraining from voting, discussing, reviewing, recommending, inspecting, investigating, taking any action on the matter. Remember, public servants may not, not in caps, take any action in matters that definitely or directly affect themselves, their family members, or their business associates. So just some good advice there. The Ethics Commission does provide an online class, I think it's called Ethics one oh one, talks about all those things that, you know, we can, that can, you know, trip up public officials and employees, so I would recommend that people take a look at that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. Any other new business? Right, moving forward to unfinished business, labor consultants. This Thursday, we are scheduled to meet to narrow down our choice for consultants in the future, at least one or two, then we'll have some verbal interviews, so that will take place this Thursday. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I just had a comment on that. Obviously, whoever we hire as, retain, I should say, is our labor consultant, you know, we want that firm to be pro employer, but pro employer certainly does not mean anti-union. We have a good relationship with our three, three unions and, gosh, six agreements by the time you get three of the PV and two with the operating engineers plus the firefighters, that is six, so, but that's important to this member, is that the person, you know, not be anti-union.
Any further discussion on that matter, or any further unfinished business? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'd like to bring up the ditch petition hearing. I understand that you attended last, last Thursday, and I believe Councilman McLaughlin attended, and anyone else. Mr. Ensmann. So I, you know, you know, all I know is what I read in the paper, and I'd say if that's right, wrong, or different, but you folks, you gentlemen were there firsthand. I'd like to hear what, what your thoughts are.
I did not read the article in the paper, but I think, again, Mr. Gold, the county engineer was given a task, and he performed his task of, with the scope of the project that he was given, he provided estimates, those estimates were very high, and so to kind of boil the whole conversation down, the commissioners, in my view, and Mr. Ensmann or Mr. McLaughlin, you can say, in my view, were open to trying to find a way to do some work in the Black Fork that would remove obstructions and fit the bill of being cost, cost benefit would be manageable, and the assessments would be affordable. So that's, I just kind of, I emailed the commissioners today and told them that we'll be at their meeting tomorrow, but I, I'm hoping that that's the direction that they'll head. There are some legal issues of this, you know, where we're at in the petition process, what can be done, can it be amended, or would it be best to maybe start that process? They're looking to legal counsel for that, but I think, I think everyone had sticker shock when they first figured it out there, but I'd say, I think, my idea is everyone's trying to work to, to an agreement where we can be good stewards of a very valuable national resource to us, the Black Fork River.
What's that, Mayor? There was an article a week ago Sunday in the regional paper, I believe your picture was on the front page of the New York Journal, and it, it left me with a little bit of confusion, and maybe that can be, you know, resolved here, I don't know. There was a quote right at the end of the article, I won't name the gentleman, say it up, I'm not here to embarrass him, it says, "We're not talking about cutting down trees, but when I looked at the actual petition, indeed, that was part of what was petitioned, in essence, clearcutting a swath twenty feet back from the, from the top of the riverbank." So, so I need some help in understanding and resolving this confusion, what, what's, what's up?
Mr. Ensmann, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea of not removing live, healthy trees with any leaning trees or dead trees within that twenty-foot swamp would be removed, but leaving the healthy species that can thrive in that bank, as I understand, those would be the ones that would remain. So it was targeted tree removal, either a better way to say it. Dead, dead trees or leaners that they felt, if we don't take this out, the future's going to wind up in the river, so why are they there? They would be removed.
That, that's helpful, because that, you know, leaners was not in the actual petition, it was, you know, removal of trees, debris, and what have you, so. One last thing, the commissioners have requested a legal opinion. What was the question that was posed to Attorney Burton?
If you, if you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's like, can you change, no pun intended here, can you change forces in the middle of streaming? I guess it wasn't intended, but, but this was, this was the language of this petition.
Okay.
And this was what the study was all about. Can they, within the parameters of the dispetition process, ask Mr. Gold to go back and just give them figures of obstruction only? Or does that, is that a whole other charge? And I think that's the reason for the meeting tomorrow, is that in their role as commissioners, they can request Mr. Gold to give them those kind of figures, and that then be requested for Mr. Burton. Can that then be amended, can the dispetition be amended? So there, there was this one question about that, is my understanding.
Can it be amended, or is it all or nothing?
I think that's kind of it, yeah, that's the idea, can this one be amended, or do we have to start, oh, and just put language of only clearing major obstructions? So in the meantime, they're, and maybe they got that answer by tomorrow, hopefully, but I'm not predicting what they're going to do, but I think their intention, the commissioners' intention is to try and see if they can move forward by asking Mr. Gold to give that a smaller scope project and see what those figures look like.
Well, that would certainly be helpful.
For all of us. Do you have any to add, Mr. Ensmann? Do you have recollection?
No, you answered very well.
Okay. All right. Any further unfinished business? If I'm to the federal legislation?
Orderance number fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, amending substitute ordinance number one, two thousand and twenty, establishing wages for department heads and other non-certified employees.
Move second reading?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Martin is second by Mr. Gates for the second reading of ordinance number fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Orderance number fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three passes to second reading.
Orderance number fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three, transferring appropriations for the year two thousand and twenty-three and declaring an emergency.
Move that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on pre-separate occasions be suspended?
Stay.
Yeah, the motion by Mr. Martin, second by Mr. Roberts, that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on pre-separate occasions be suspended, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Motion to suspend passes.
Will the ordinance be taken on pass?
Okay. The motion by Mr. Martin, second by Mr. Roberts, for the passes of ordinance number fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. A motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of ordinance number fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. This, the, the next few pieces of legislation all kind of, kind of go together a little bit. It has to do with, with potential phase three of Black Fork Commons area, which is sort of down the river. But that is for the folks that are more in tune with their projects that are feeling better. My dilemma is the funding portion. So later on, we will be addressing a resolution to enter into an agreement to design this plan to the tune of forty-one thousand dollars. And the Shelby Foundation has agreed to fund up to half of that, which is why I've got another piece of legislation that adds funds to the Black Fork Park line. Because we will get those funds in, I can expend them. The other half is, is the tough part. That's what this ordinance is. It's where are we going to get our twenty thousand five hundred dollars? As we didn't appropriate those funds. During appropriations, I had estimated five million as our income tax revenue for the issue, which was pretty close to what it was in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-two, we broke, broke six million. So I figured that was a pretty good conservative estimate. Now that we've gotten through April, it looks like business income is, is down a little bit, well substantially, from prior years. So that five million is probably now my optimistic estimate. So we're going to have a lot tighter budget this year than, than I was hoping for. Because with that five million, we pretty much appropriated everything. Now, there's a lot of worst-case scenario in our appropriations. You know, wages include that if everybody could possibly retire, even though they don't have intentions on it, retire. You know, there's things like the police, the prisoner housing is a pretty big line item because the chief anticipates worst-case scenario that, hey, we've got to send prisoners out to other, other facilities all year long. So already, since that has happened, we've got a little bit of play. But I don't have a lot of play. And so for the time being, I'm moving twenty thousand five hundred, asking to move twenty thousand five hundred out of just our miscellaneous, miscellaneous line item. We'll make it smaller, that'll make Councilman Gates happy. But in, into this Black Fork Park line. I will say that in recent history, that's going to take us down to about maybe twenty-five thousand in net fund. That's less than we spent in recent history out of that line item. I think it's, it's possible, but you know, things like last June when we spent ten thousand dollars in tree removal after the, the big storm, that came out of that line item. So I'm hoping for great weather. And it's, it's not to say that at the end of the year, I might have to do some, some real tight adjustments to keep us in black. But this is, this is the best that I can do for now.
Further discussion? Mr. Martin?
I certainly appreciate Director Crum's efforts helping to make the numbers work.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Order number fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three passes.
Order number sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Amending ordinance number nine, two thousand and twenty-three, annual appropriations and declaring emergency.
Move the rule requiring that ordinance be read on pre-separate occasions be suspended?
Say it again.
Yeah, the motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on pre-separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
The motion to suspend passes? Will the ordinance be taken on pass?
Say it again.
Yeah, the motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of order number sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Order number sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three passes.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with the Edge Group Inc. for engineering services and final design for the Black Fork Commons Phase Three project and declaring emergency.
Will the ordinance be taken on the pass? Second. Yeah, the motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of resolution twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Discussion? Come on.
That's what I like, sir.
All right. You did reserve time.
Yeah.
No, yeah, I really want to be brief. This is, you know, what we have in front of us and what this is working through is a continuation of a plan that has been adopted here that we're seeing very much wonderful efforts happening in downtown for its improvement. So that's going to take this space right now that is a pile of rubble and come up with a plan on what we need to do for the town. I know it's not easy sometimes finding funding and getting things where it needs to be. But, you know, just as a point of reference, when we did this the first time several years ago, it has garnished over three million dollars worth of investment downtown Shelby. And that's just what we can see and what we can do and on the prior than many, many, many dollars as well. So it doesn't go unnoticed by me from CIC. It doesn't go unnoticed from many, many citizens of Shelby that are very, very happy with what's happening downtown. And we will take, we hope to see what comes out of these fifteen acres right through the center of town to something very miraculous. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the finance director certified the forty-one thousand. We've put in our half of twenty thousand five hundred. And the, the other half is to be provided by the Shelby Foundation. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's the Shelby Foundation agreed, they're unanimously agreed right away to fund up to twenty-five thousand, just in case there was any buffer. But really, it's the twenty thousand five hundred that they were paid to the city and then that contract would go forward.
Mr. Gates.
Question for the finance director. Has he received that money?
Not yet.
Mr. Gates.
When does he expect to receive it?
I can contact the foundation tomorrow. You know, this passes.
Mayor, I, I would tell you, I don't believe you can sign this agreement until that money's been received from the Shelby Foundation. So speed is of the essence.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three passes. Time for miscellaneous business? Any miscellaneous business that we brought for council? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, who council?
Second.
Ah, well, I got Mr. Gates for the motion. I got, let's give it to Mr. McLaughlin. All right. Roll call, please, for adjournment.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Motion passes, council member seven fifty.
There we go. I'm already ready to seal it too.